We will go back into executive session after this meeting. And so, I will declare the regular council meeting now in session. And I guess the clerk, if you'll take the role, please.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Please excuse.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Hurek.
Here.
All right. So, if Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Van Ness is joining us by phone? Ms. Lausley?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, right. So, if you'll all stand, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next item on the agenda is a study session. Kenmore Village Spencer Square update. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Baker and city council. Just one little housekeeping item. We didn't want to put a ton of microphones on this table. So, we do have several microphones, but they are directional. So, if you're going to talk, just make sure that a microphone is pointing in your general direction. You don't have to be speaking really close to it. It will pick up the sound. And the main point is to pick up the recordings so that the proceedings of this meeting can be recorded. But anyway, so, Kenmore became a city in 98, and one of the first orders of business was, hey, we want our own downtown. We don't want to be just a pass-through bedroom community with no sense of downtown place. And so, early on, the city got to work, had advisory committees, citizen advisory committees. And in 2003, the city council adopted a downtown plan. And that downtown plan, back in 2003, had a lot of important key components in it that are slowly but surely coming to fruition. And it's really cool for someone like me to be here in the later years, watching these pieces fall into place that were contemplated and envisioned so long ago. On the civic side of the equation, the downtown plan said that here in this quadrant, this quadrant of the downtown that we're sitting in, should have a new city hall, a new library, and a new community center. Now, the plan contemplated all three of those components kind of all together in one spot. Well, that's not quite exactly how it worked. We got the three components, but they're a little separated. So, we've got city hall, and then we've got library about a block away. And our version of a community center is in between. And that's the hangar building in the town square. So, that's really fun. Also, 10 or 12 years ago, the city assembled some land, just under 10 acres. The old King County Park and Ride, the old 1960s strip mall there. And the city assembled those properties with the purpose of putting them back into the development community for redevelopment under certain conditions. And that was a long process, but that happened as well. And so, the city kind of was sort of the master developer for a few years. And they sold the first chunk of those 10 acres to Kenmore Camera in 2014, actually 2013. And then, Kenmore Camera opened for business in their new location in 2014. And then, the next piece to go was the King County Park and Ride, and that was sold to Main Street Property Group for redevelopment. They're doing just over 200 units of really nice residential development there called the Spencer 68. And then, the remaining portion of the Kenmore Village property is what I call the commercial portion of the Kenmore Village property. And because of our working relationship with Main Street Property Group, and because of what they invested so far, and how they had performed, the city decided to sell that remaining commercial portion of the Kenmore Village to Main Street Property Group. And so, they bought it under certain conditions, and they went into a development agreement with us with the requirement that they tear down those old buildings and build some nice stuff, which they have done. There's a couple pieces left, though, in what I call the final phase of Kenmore Village. And the final phase of Kenmore Village is the commercial pad in between the hangar and the Link, and also, the restaurant pad fronting 181st, right in front of Kenmore Camera. So, Main Street Property Group has land use permit approval to do a 20,000-square-foot commercial, single-story commercial building in between the hangar and the Link, right here on 68. And then, they have an option to purchase the restaurant pad. And again, that's the pad fronting 181st, right in front of Kenmore Camera. But our agreement with Main Street says that they can only purchase that restaurant pad when they have produced a lease with a sit-down restaurant. And so, Main Street, I know, has been very aggressively marketing and listing that property for potential restaurant tenants. And what I'd like to do now is turn the time over to Main Street Property Group to give you an update on where they're at on their projects, and what they've invested in the city, and how things are going, and then, what they'd like to propose for the final phase. And again, final phase being the commercial building in between the Link and the hangar, and also, the restaurant pad. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Main Street Property Group.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Eric Campbell. Senior of Main Street. And I just want to give a quick kind of overview before I turn over to both Kim and Kelly. First and foremost, I wanted to really thank everyone for really being great partners. I mean, it's been a great opportunity to, you know, be part of the team that has helped execute the vision. And as you well know, all the hard work, you know, not only you, but the city councils before have put forth, has really made it a great opportunity for us to, you know, to hit it. A couple of things I'd like to bring up, kind of play off a couple of statements you made, Rob. First and foremost, I think one of the most important things is our ability to be nimble. I don't think anyone ever thought there was going to have a chance to have a 20,000-square-foot Evergreen Health Medical Center, you know, and we were able to, at the time, be nimble enough and be able to make that execute. Kelly gets some high accolades for putting that all together. Second thing is, just what you were mentioning, you know, you had your plan, you know, having a library, community center, and a city hall, all being, you know, concentrated together. Thankfully, they weren't. Now, you've got more of a walkable community. You know, you have a reason to go from one point to another. Likewise, you're going to see tonight, is that when we really looked at the site, that single-story use that we had in place was, you know, one of the negatives about it, first was going to be a parking hog, but we don't need to talk about that too much. But the big issue is, if you look, it would have been, you know, more or less tucked down and not really activate 68 that much. And this whole new plan is really borrowed upon a lot of the things that we have seen at other markets and say, how can we activate the street? But being more so, even really saying, you guys have made this incredible investment in the town square with the hangar, and how could we really highlight that and really activate that much more? You know, there's great examples all over the place, but one of the places that I think, you know, I'm going to speak for Kelly and myself here, is when we go to Portland, and you look at the Pearl District, and you say, you're just drawn to these great places that have a restaurant looking onto these public places. Now, they've done some cool stuff, you know, waterfalls, and you know, all that fun stuff. But there's also places, you know, just places where people like to congregate, and that's where your hangar really makes a big difference. Secondly, you'll see also some of the architecture, is that we've also, not only we're playing off the hangar, but things we've seen in San Francisco, too. And the reason why I bring up these two communities, they really understand how important a great walkable community is. And you guys have seen that through the vision. We've done it through, you know, starting out with residential. Remember, it's always easier to build residential. Commercial is the toughest part. And so, I think that's enough for me to say. I'm going to let Kim start off and give you guys all the fun details, and then we'll talk thereafter.
Thanks. First of all, just want to introduce our team that we have here. Eric is our CEO, obviously. Kelly is our president. We have Mike Swenson with Transpo Group. He's a principal. He's our transportation engineer. And then, we also have the Dolan Group, who's our architect, Tony Radovich and John Thatch. So, they're here, too, just, you know, to kind of help answer questions or share in the vision. This new, this next phase, as we're calling it, has a mix of uses, and it's kind of our final phase of Spencer Square. As Eric mentioned, you know, in the original development agreement, we had some initial plans, but, you know, as our development evolved, as the city's vision evolved, we have kind of drawn some further inspiration, and we kind of have a new vision. It's not that different, but it's just kind of what we feel is a better vision of what is actually needed in the downtown. So, we're here to present our next phase, and what we think is kind of our best phase yet. Just kind of give you what we're going to go through. We're going to go through project history, kind of what Main Street's done in the downtown area. Rob touched on that. We'll be brief on that. Then, go through our next phase, the site plan, and then, we kind of have divided it into two parts to make it a little bit easier to understand. Then, we'll do a little, just touch a little bit on the comparison of the development agreement, what was approved, and what we're proposing. Primarily, we're going to talk about the differences between the two, and how this is a little bit of a less intense use. So, you know, we're all talking about this downtown urbanization. We're calling this the bullseye. I mean, this is right where everything's happening. Both the city and Main Street have really worked together to respond to the city's vision for making this place a downtown core. I mean, it's becoming walkable. You see people walking a little bit more now than they used to. And, you know, we want it to continue to evolve in making this really an urban center. This next phase of Spencer Square enhances the vision. We're adding a vibrant restaurant, which activates the town green, office space for new businesses, added signature corner retail space, which you'll see, and then, new residents to the community. So, you know, more eyes on all of the downtown area. One thing we also want to mention is that the Donovan's, Kenmore Camera are, you know, key parts of this vision, and they were really the first part of the vision. And we, you know, want to work cooperatively with them, and we have been to date, and we will continue to do that. I mean, we feel like they're a very important part of this downtown. Just a quick recap of some of the Main Street projects. So, the Spencer 68, Phase 1 and 2 are complete, 197 residential units, close to 100 percent leased, just because one phase just completed in December. So, our first phase was done in April 2015, and, you know, we have a lot of happy residents that really love living in Kenmore. Here's our Spencer 68 Phase 3. So, this is what you see still under construction up there. We have 25 townhomes, which will be complete in August sometime. The Link, some of you are at the grand opening. Thanks for coming. We have 94 residential units and 20,000 square feet of medical. Evergreen Health is currently under construction on their tenant improvements, and we've heard that they'll be occupying sometime in late 2017. Right? Right, Milton?
Governor's the last I heard.
Okay, all right, me, too. So, you know, obviously, all of this started with the city's vision. Main Street's helped execute, but it really was the city that had this, you know, whole goal. So, just a few highlights. Main Street's invested more than $100 million in Kenmore, added 316 residential units between Spencer 68 and the Link, and more than 500 new residents. We have constructed 31 new parallel parking stalls on 68th, enhanced pedestrian safety with new sidewalks and connection points, the Governor's Smart Communities Award in conjunction with Kenmore, new parking lot with high design elements, and then, all projects we've started and completed on time. So, here's where we kind of get into the next phase. And there's two parts. One, part one, what we're calling is, right along 68th, we are having three commercial residential spaces that front right along the sidewalk. Those are also referred, they're kind of a, they could be commercial if there is the demand for that, or in the event there's not, then we would propose they were residential for some time. 24 residential units, which combines townhomes and flats. And then, 1,850 square feet of retail, which is right on this corner right here, this corner space. And then, 218 parking stalls, that's not just Phase 1, that's actually the whole development. And that also includes the post office and the on-street parking. Part 2 is on the opposite side of the town green from the hangar building.
The 218 parking stalls, that does not include Link Building parking?
That does not include Link. That is not, Link is totally separate. We're not-
Yes, in addition to Link.
Yes, that's correct. We've kind of excluded Link from this analysis because it parks itself. It overparks itself, actually. Part 2 is this building over here, and that includes a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, which is all of this, which opens onto the town green with some outdoor seating right here. And then, a 3,000-square-foot office is right here on the entry into the center.
Do you envision that outdoor seating to be year-round?
So, again, this is just going through, we're going to go into a little bit more detail on part 1. So, I just kind of went through those stats, but there they are again. This, we're just talking about this whole building right here. So, this phase incorporates townhomes and retail. And, you know, a few of the things that we kind of took inspiration from were, obviously, the hangar building. Such a prominent architecture at the corner. It's iconic. We don't want to take away from it. If anything, we want to add to it. And so, what we're kind of doing is stepping down 68th. We start with Spencer 68, which is kind of a northwest architecture. We kind of get a little bit more urban contemporary with the Link, still tying in some of that northwest architecture. And then, we wanted to kind of combine, you know, kind of come down with the quality, bring the quality up as we get closer to the town green and the hangar building, because those are such a high-quality building. We really wanted to play off of it. And so, what we did is, these are some of our design inspirations. There's a building in San Francisco that we really liked the design of. It's got some retail on the ground floor, residential above, and, you know, high-quality materials. It's won Gold Nugget Awards. It's something that we thought would be perfect for this location. This is a live-work, so it was originally built as a residential unit, and now, it's a couple residential units combined into commercial space at Six Oaks in Bothell. We actually took a couple of the staff members and Nancy there last week and had them walk through it, just so they could understand how it worked. We also have the Carter Building in Redmond, which is one we just completed. Again, this is just kind of showing the street activation right here, where these, again, are live-work units, where right now, I think one of them is a commercial unit and the rest are residential. Eventually, they'll all be commercial when that street develops. And then, another building similar in the Pearl District in Portland has that same kind of street frontage.
Yeah, I think that live-work is one of those things that's hard to, what does that mean? When you say they're transitioning to commercial?
It's really not live and work, it's more live or work. And, you know, we're calling them commercial residential units, because it's really, hopefully, they're all commercial. But if there's no demand there, they're residential until there is that commercial demand. Because I think what nobody wants is a vacant commercial space along 68th.
Not, you live upstairs and work downstairs?
No, no.
Good clarification.
So, these are just some of the key words that we looked at when we were designing this building, and, you know. And then, here's just a couple of the images that we've created, just, again, showing the context of kind of the step down from the modern Link Building, going into the high quality of this proposed building, to the hangar building at the corner. And then, here's a close-up of kind of that retail corner that we're talking about, the 815 square feet right here, kind of a, you know, big commercial corner right here with lots of visibility, then going into our commercial residential units right here.
Can you say 1,800?
Yes, 1,850 square feet right here. Yep. And then, these are all a little over 900, each for those commercial residential units.
Do you have an interest in tenant repossessment?
No, not specifically.
So, you're going to carry through that cantilevered roof design from the Link to this proposed new one to our hangar building?
Yes. I'd say it's a little bit less dramatic here. We're trying to let the hangar building have the glory. We're just playing off of it. So, now, we get into part 2, which is the 5,000-square-foot restaurant and the 3,000-square-foot So, again, you know, this is a bookend for the town green with the hangar building on one side and this building on the other. So, we're trying to keep with a little bit of the roofline that's on the hangar building, playing off of that. Lots of glass, again, similar to what the hangar building's doing, but activation of this amazing outdoor space that's been created. And, you know, similar to the Pearl District, we're looking at, you know, outdoor dining, activation of this common space, lots of visibility, lots of light, and, you know, really just orienting all of this outdoor dining towards the town green, and then also opening it up a little bit to the south for the southern exposure. Here's a couple images of this. Again, you can see the outdoor seating right here. It wraps around a little bit over here onto 181st. And a little bit more context, just to kind of see how the hangar building, the proposed restaurant building, kind of play off of each other with the rooflines and the glass, and, you know, a little bit of the materials being similar, but not exactly the same.
Can I ask a question? Is this a good time? So, on that, can you tell me about how you, because originally, in the option, in the PSA, it was written so that it was just going to be a restaurant pad. Can you explain your process and kind of how you evolved into what you've got there now?
You want to go? Okay. So, the thing is, I think, you know, one thing is, we were always walking around, and when you looked at, the one thing, if you notice, we went to, if you look at Remnant Town Center, they're tearing down all those single-story, you know, one-purpose, you know, buildings, because they're just kind of stay-at-home. It looks like anywhere, you know, it's just like your typical suburbia. And so, we're thinking, how do we really create a iconic, you know, piece here? And this is where, you know, you really want more four-sided architecture. And the problem is, restaurants really are not set up for four-sided architecture. And that's why we, you can see how by wrapping, you know, if you go ahead and show the office portion, just put your cursor right to that. There you go. By having that office as a stand-alone, you're also, you're activating that corner. And we didn't want to turn, the thing is, what's the most important part about this whole design? It's the town green. And we want to put, you know, the restaurant. That's where you want all the activation to happen. And so, that's just, you know, always, you know, throwing, working with our architect, John Thatch, you know, Kelly's, you know, experience with the restaurateurs. I mean, that's the thing, is, you know, we learn more all the time, right? And I'll say this, is that, you know, Kelly, you want to expand upon this, but Kelly, you know, which makes us unique, is that Kelly's relationship with these restaurateurs, I mean, he's helped, you know, he's the ones out here walking with them, you know, talking to them. And while you talk about why Nikita's and people like that are so excited about the space.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, we had a restaurant, potential restaurant tenant, out to the site on Friday, and they probably spent an hour and a half onsite. Rob met us and gave us a tour of the hangar building. But it's the first time, now that the hangar is largely complete, and the park area is complete, it's the first time that, you know, folks with a vision could really see how the restaurant and the community center can work together to create this, you know, amazing kind of vibrant, active, activated downtown core. And so, when we started looking at these plans with them and envisioning this building on the space, both standing on the restaurant pad and in the hangar building, it really became clear, and I think Rob saw a lot of this, but it became clear, all the different ways that you could integrate the two and that they could play off each other. And we're talking about outside seating year-round. How do we make that happen? How do we, you know, kind of blur the edge of the restaurant and the town green area so that there's free flow between the two? So, those are the kind of things that, you know, when we're showing these plans and these concepts, the real experienced restaurateurs that have a great potential to be successful here kind of pick up on right away. And so, helping to understand that vision, create that vision in conjunction with them is what, you know, really sets the tone for them to be excited. And that was a group that came away from the meeting, you know, pretty bullish on the prospects.
So, Brent, to, you know, to, and to play upon that, the mixed-use element, you know, having office there, you know, was really nice. You know, Ori was just joking about her way, me and Kelly, you know, as she goes, you know, to Urban Coffee next to us. So, having office there during the earlier part of the day, you know, until 5 o'clock, it helps put eyes on the street, creates more activation. Because, you know, a sit-down restaurant, you know, it's going to be quiet, you know, until lunchtime, if they opt to go with lunch or not here. So, that's just, again, gain more eyes on the street, gain more activation, and like, you know, the hangar will have coffee there, us having more office uses. So, that's what we really found. And so, it was really as much saying, hey, what do we need to do to make the town, this, you know, downtown core successful? And it's really that three-legged stool. You need enough residential to make retail and to activate the restaurants. You need office so that retail doesn't die during the day, but you need the retail to give the city the buy, the life, you know? And so, it really takes all three. And that's the reason for it.
And this is about the store footage for the restaurant? That's about the same size as the previous?
Yes.
So, can I ask, and can I follow up on something on that? So, when you then add that office building on the west side of that, are you losing some of that outdoor space that kind of now encroaches into the town square, as well as losing parking spaces?
I think one thing on the parking is, previously, there was only eight parking stalls in lieu of the office. It was very inefficient design because of the dimensions. And so, in and out were awkward, and it just, we were looking at it. It's also not the first thing you want to see when you drive into a commercial center. Instead, you see, you know, this nice corner right here when you drive in. And we're still getting parking along that main drive. Our parking's actually a lot higher. But that, we just felt like this was a natural fit at that location.
The other thing I'd mention really quick is that restaurants generate a tremendous amount of trash and garbage. And in the prior design, the parking lot was the place where that trash was accumulated. So, on this major corner, you'd have, you know, a relatively inefficient parking area and the trash pickup and storage. And in this design, we're able to enclose a significant portion of the, just call it the services, for the restaurant and the office, and hide them as much as possible so that they're only really present when they're being picked up, and otherwise, they're put away.
So, what are the things that you consider where that office is, as the connection to the restaurant? I'm sure you kind of tossed around all sorts of brainstorming ideas.
Like, who would the potential user be?
No. Besides office?
Right.
Were there other things you considered? What else could use that space rather than a parking lot?
Other than the office?
Yeah. Or just office was so obvious, you just didn't go much beyond that?
That was pretty much it, yeah. Because we knew, you really don't want, you know, there was, we knew from what the vision was, not to go residential, you know, trying to, because we're already being told by Rob, hey, you guys got to get more office, you need more office.
You guys can read our minds.
So, we're saying, but you have a great document, right? And we understood that. And so, that was really, and I think the reality is, is just because, you know, and what, and yet, it would have been too big, I mean, an 8,000, 10,000-square-foot restaurant, it likely would have us trying to, someone to fill that. I mean, it's really remote. So, you couldn't, so I think the other alternative was, do you expand it? And, you know, we would have just been, it would have just been very, very difficult to do. And that's where, that's why, you know, Kelly's, because, you know, he's worked with all these restaurateurs as we're filling up the stuff in Bothell, you know, as we've filled up the other locations, some Mamish. And it's really, you're finding 5,000's kind of a magical spot right now. Nothing really much larger, you know, because they can't afford it. You know, this is the thing, is, as you know, the proliferation of restaurants, you've got to make, you need it one over, you know, the one thing here, and we'll, like, continue, is, you can tell this building is significantly overdesigned, what you would find if someone else was out there doing this back, right? But that's kind of our confidence, this is part of the benefit of the office. The office will get the rent that will help underwrite the restaurant, because, you know, now, you've got an iconic corner that really plays up. I mean, if people are going, this is, this for an office space is going to be a high demand.
Lawyer with a chihuahua hanging in there.
Yeah, yeah. Or a dentist, you know? The way things are going, it could be a sports medicine class.
I have a question on that. So, if the addition of the, so, since the original option was with just a restaurant, knowing that we were going to have more- knowing that we were going to have more parking spaces and more, that would serve the whole area, not just the restaurant area. So if, if the office helps subsidize the restaurant, then is it reasonable to look at it and say that the property is worth more today if we allow office use in conjunction with the restaurant?
Not if you want that high-quality design. See, that's what I'm trying to do, too. That you don't, Kelly won't punch me later. No, but if you look at this design, you're not going to find this on spec. You just can't, you know, that's what we're saying is, for us to be able to put the commitment to have something that mimics the Hangar, I mean, I'm even, hopefully Rob won't hit me on this either, that if you look at the investment in the Hangar, no one, there's not someone private that would have done that, you know, to have that high quality of architecture for how much it costs per square foot. So the, so the point being is, what you're asking is, is it worth more? Slightly. But the part is, this is being, this design is what makes it so, what we're saying is to have this high-quality design is what's enabled us to do that. If we just had it standalone, I don't know what would happen. I mean, this is, it's just not something you would find in Kenmore. I mean, you, all you have to do is look across, you know, everywhere right now, we're not seeing anything of this type of magnitude, this quality. So that's really, in a lot of ways, it's really an art gift back to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So now we get into a little bit of the, kind of a comparison of the development agreement to the current plan, and we tried to just kind of give you, you know, previous uses and then what we're currently proposing, and kind of the difference between the two. And I think, you know, a couple key, key things is, you know, less, less intensive use than previously was approved. With that, you know, getting rid of that 20,000 square foot, what was going to be a commercial fitness center is a huge benefit from an intensity of use. More overall parking stalls, and we've got all kinds of analysis, including the street stalls, not including the street stalls, including the post office, everything, we've excluded the link again, like Rob mentioned. Increased quality of materials, like Eric was saying, this has allowed us to do a really nice, really nice buildings, that, you know, higher quality even than what we've done to date in Kenmore. Increased design compatibility with the town green and the Hangar. So we're, you know, again, playing off of that. When we originally did the development agreement, we didn't know what the Hangar was going to look like, or even if it was ever going to come to fruition. Now we know and we can, we can work with it, because it's so great. And then pedestrian activation of 68th, the town green, and the main entrance into the development is what we're, what we currently have. And that's really it. I mean, we've got a couple additional exhibits that just go into more detail on the parking and the site plan, but that's, that's really our next phase.
Laura, Councilwoman Swer, go ahead.
So on the, the part that I think you have up now, the one, the building, I guess we're calling it Part One, the orange one. So one of my questions is, I get the side on 68th where you have the, hopefully, commercial and something to look at, which is wonderful, because it was always sunk down before. But what I'd like you to talk about is the backside.
Back here? Or right here?
Yeah, there. So the parking and how does that work? Are we, what is somebody going to see? Are they going to see some more business or?
I'm trying to pull this up.
How are you treating that elevation, I guess?
So there's underbuilding parking. So that's, you're going to see a little bit of that. There's some that's just tuck-under parking, and then there's a whole level of underbuilding parking, except for at this retail corner. So this is the site plan level one. So this kind of shows you, we've got this retail corner right here, which is, there's downgrade right here, and then you drive in and there's parking underneath this building.
Is that parking there cover the residential units? Everybody would be?
Yes, it does. It says, there are 35 parking stalls under the building.
And how many units?
There's 27, that includes the commercial residential units. And then, and then when you get up to the second level, just to keep going, this is, then you'll start seeing the building. So on the second level, we have units that cover that, cover that parking.
Part of the answer also is, on the, you know, what we call the backside or the west side, it's a similar architectural intent. So, you know, really all four, yeah, to the front. So all four sides, all the sides of, of that building are similar architectural intent. So there's no like front or back. Depends wherever you are, it's the front.
I think if you look at the link, you know, the south side, there's parking entrances there, but it still has really nice architecture.
So is that what the expectation is? It would be similar to that? So you would have that first layer would be parking, that you do something so it doesn't look parking?
Yes, yes, yes.
And the one point, too, if you notice that drive aisle, you're actually looking onto the side of a, of that one building. I don't know if you have a good picture of that one corner, the very western edge of that, Kim?
Eric, what do you mean by drive aisle? Maybe you could point that.
So, excuse me here, Kim. So you have the drive aisle right through here? So you see, as you come, as you drive in? Oh, Chris is not showing.
You're a little...
Oh, here, let me do that. Sorry about that, Rob. There we go, right here? Okay, so when you drive down the drive aisle right here, so you're seeing, this here is a living unit. So you know, there's, so what I'm saying is, that is good architecture, high-quality there. So, yep. So, you know, you're not seeing, you know, the parking garage is actually a townhome unit, and so therefore that, you know, garage is covered, you know, as I say. And so this here is nothing but, you know, this would look like you're looking at one of our townhomes.
Couple of things. One, I really, I like the part two that you have here quite a bit, the addition of office and the architecture you guys have put together for that looked really fantastic. My major concern is with the live-work and with our current economy right now, where things are going rent-wise and the cost of, cost of housing, all this, and the need for housing. Maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see a world where those go commercial anytime soon. And I'm very concerned about, especially having street-level, additional street-level residential once we get past Link. I would much rather prefer, and this extends all the way into the orange townhomes you have there, I'd much rather prefer at the street level for there to be something for people to interact with that's not somebody's home. And I have to say, it is a little concerning, the idea of somebody living directly above the park like that, it just kind of feels a little wrong to me. So I like the general direction you're going. I am reluctant to change the development agreement to allow for street-level, non-commercial use in that, in that area, because I really do think that pedestrians need to have places to go, just things to see that aren't just somebody's living room, because that's a very different vibe. You know, walking by an insurance agent may not be the most exciting thing in the world, but you don't feel weird looking in the window there. Somebody's house right next to the park, that doesn't quite feel right to me. And, and I think on 68th, too, I really think that we need on-the-street level, you know, commercial of some sort. But other than that, I really love what you guys are doing, especially with, with the part one there, with how it's interacting with the, with the Hangar Building, and I want to thank you for that.
So it sounds like in Bothell, you did take one living unit and turn it into commercial?
Yeah, we actually did more than that. It's now over half the units. Why don't we take a picture? Let's go back to that picture.
I'd be interested in how that transition goes. So you designed it as a house to live in, and then you sort of go in and jackhammer it out and turn it into a commercial?
So first, here's, let me show you real quick, sorry about this, Kim.
The interesting, well, Eric's teeing that up, one of the, what happened on this space, so there were 11, you know, live-work residential commercial spaces around the outside of this building. And now five of them, five or six of them are now commercial, but they mostly started out as residential. But as the commercial folks showed up, we were able to move residential people elsewhere in the building to accommodate the commercial tenants. So in the case of this space, this John L. Scott space, that's two of the live-work spaces combined, and one of them, when John L. Scott came, had a resident in it, who still is a resident of Six Oaks, but now lives in the building somewhere else. So it's, the commercial folks tend to do a creeping takeover over time of these spaces, because they're so attractive and there's the vibrancy and there's all this other stuff going on. But sometimes it does take some, take some time. And the worst thing for, you know, development, especially one of this quality with this kind of investment, is for ground-floor spaces to be vacant with nobody, nobody in them. Makes it very hard for people to get excited about, about the project.
How long did that transition take?
It was quick. It was, well, less than a year for sure.
Yeah. What I think, the part here, which is interesting, one thing that we learned, so this all starts not only with Portland, that's, has quite a bit of this, only, because I want to use Portland as an example about the townhomes. But the, the first of the live-work is that, what we found was, the really first city really was doing it well was Remnant, and they had something called Lions Gate. The one thing we did when we were just talking to the planners and some of the business owners, they were going with the old, oh, let someone live above and work below. But those spaces were too small, they're like little studios, right? And they just, you know, all they could do is maybe fit, like, you know, their hair salon and the one chair or something. So what we figured out, and this is again, working with our architects and so on, is make, using flats instead, so they were larger, right? But yet you really can't find these spaces right now, anything new. I mean, if you try to go out there and say, hey, go find an 800 square foot, you know, retail space, that's wide, you can't find that. And that's why, my feeling is, you know, I think, you know, the demand is actually here, but if you ask us, then why don't we just go commercial? The thing is, what we don't want to have, one of the one abilities that we have, is that if we just miss it, we'd rather have people living there, and then through, you know, through this, you know, as time goes on, the market picks up, you pick it up. Because here's the, just one last thing, commercial tenants are much easier than residential tenants. You sign five-year leases, you don't, you don't have the maintenance. So there's, from our selfish purposes, we'd rather have it be commercial.
This is worth, what, what's all the lease on, on commercial higher than residential? Do you have monetary, uh, combination?
It, it is, but you also have to invest more in the space to support the commercial tenant coming in. But they are willing to pay slightly higher rent because of that additional investment.
But this is, and this is the reason why we wanted to show the picture of the San Francisco one. Now, this one here was all one large tenant here that took this, because that was actually a restaurant. That was La, La Berthe, or that was, who bought Starbucks bought them, and that was a whole different story. But it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing. But let me show you one thing, I just want, you know what, let's look at one site plan that shows a little bit better on the, click one more through, click again, please. Okay, this doesn't quite show it, but it really kind of does. The thing here, why, if, you know, the question, why not commercial down this little pedestrian corner? The likelihood of success is not very great to have, you know, to have a, a office space, because, you know, they're not on the main core. If you go around, look at the Pearl District quite a bit, you will see quite a bit of townhomes sitting on these type of town squares. And it's perfect, because all of a sudden you get more eyes on the town square and town green, excuse me, and that gives you safety, right? You know, this is always what we're talking about. How do you have people who care, you know? And what we'll find is those lower spaces, that's more apt to be probably a private office for those people that live there, you know, because that's how the design is. It's not quite large enough for a bedroom. So it's a really great use, I mean, for the people who love to have a place, you know, because as you probably know, many of your friends have to work at home nowadays, and it's a great spot for it. It's a, it's going to be highly coveted, but this is something that we have found that, you know, if you look at the site plan, let's go down one more, just show it a little bit more, because the hang, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
The Hangar, while it's beautiful, it just, we've got a little bit of a pinch point just right here, going back to these units. And that's the reason for it. And, you know, again, I understand what you're saying, but I have high confidence that these will be office. We already, you know, are investing in a high-retail core here, and then here, we just get more eyes on this backside to, you know, really, I think, make it that much of a, you know, greater spot, especially security-wise, which is always important for this, so pathways.
Do you have to say, do you know what the square footage is?
Do you know what the square footage is for the, the total other residential units in the project on 68th?
The units above?
Yeah, you've got, you've got a total here for retail office, which would be the corner, southeast corner, and then there's the live...
The commercial residential above, that's those three resident, that's those three units on 68th.
Right. What is all, what is the total square footage or building area for the other remaining units approximately? I'm just wondering if you have any.
Yeah, 24,000 probably gross.
Twenty-four, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Councilman Dusky.
About 20,000.
So Councilmember Herbig, pretty much word for word said what I was going to say. So I do like the restaurant office pad, and although it's sad to lose those parking spaces, it was very awkward there. I'm not ready to give up retail on 68th. There's that whole entire area there that all of a sudden, there's nothing to do. And I actually really have a problem with the townhomes down at the town green level. I think, you know, if you've got a lot of little kids in the splash pad and you look over and somebody's sitting on their couch in their underwear, that really doesn't go well. I don't like that in my mind. So, you know, if those could be office and, you know, you had retail or office or something on 68th, then I like this plan. I was also wondering, does this building go out further into the parking than what you've got planted as grass over there? I couldn't quite tell between the two. It's, it's pretty much the same?
No, yeah.
Okay.
It fits within the same box.
Okay.
So what's the visibility for Kenmore Camera with this design?
Well, you know, the restaurant is one tall story. View easements that Kenmore Camera has are totally preserved, and, you know, Kenmore Camera sits up a little bit, so I think the visibility of the signage and everything is going to be unobstructed. We're going to look at that from, from 522 just to make sure, but that's our initial thought.
We're also talking about some sort of monument on the corner, when you're taking a right or a left into, so that people arrive and know what's there, and approximately where to go to get where the, what direction to go to get where they want to go to.
Not that we don't love all of the businesses in Kenmore, because we do, but Kenmore Camera and Kenmore Air just...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But you, you know, and...
Councilmember Smith.
Brian, can you tell, for the DC zoning, can you tell me what would be the typical percentage required for commercial relative to the total? Do you know approximately what we'd be looking at for something like that?
No, I don't, off the top of my head.
Okay. And so, and one of the reasons I asked, because it's sort of, you know, when we sold it, there was an expectation of commercial. And so that, we understood that the commercial aspect was not a strength of the market at the time, and so, but now, and I understand why you're doing what you're doing, but what it does is it, it puts us in a situation where you've now got a proposal where, you know, worst-case scenario, all the live-work are, are residential units, and so you have 1,850 square feet, which is about seven or eight percent of the total project is commercial relative to what, when we sold it, we are under the assumption we were going to get a commercial project. So it, it changes the dynamics significantly from what the direction we thought we were going with this. Did, do you understand my question there?
Yeah, no, I'm going to let Milton speak first, and then I'll...
Okay.
I would argue what we need to compare this to is a 20,000-square-foot gym. I never wanted the gym, and so almost anything's better than that. But this is way, way better than a 20,000-square-foot gym.
Well, and I would agree with that.
Well, I was just, I was just going to say, when, when we did the development agreement, and that 20,000-square-foot building was in that section, that was a fitness facility. I mean, we've said that, but the, the only reason it was there is because there was a fitness tenant that was very interested. At the end of the day, it just wasn't going to work out, because it wasn't the right use for the area. It didn't make sense from a parking standpoint and for a variety of, because, variety of other reasons. But that's the only reason that we ever created a site plan that had that box on it. That's not something we would typically have done.
Yeah, and so... How I look at it, I remember when Link, we had this discussion with the Link and with the DA on that, and how we also altered the residential, too, to make it more economically beneficial from a development side. But what it, what it's doing is it's just chipping away, each one of these chips away at the percentage, total percentage of commercial or retail that we will have in this project that really can't come back. Once these are developed, they're going to be, yeah, the, the, the units on, you know, there's 2,700 square feet of units on 68th, but other than that, everything else is pretty much set in stone once they're constructed.
So let me just do a little counterpunch. So let me just do a little counter punch in here.
Sure. No, this is why I enjoy having this.
I appreciate that, but the reason why I want to show this here is first and foremost, first, when you think about the first vision, because remember, we weren't the first choice, you know, when you actually had, we're the third choice. So I just want to keep that in mind, okay? So first thing, you guys were very great to work with us on the link, but that was, that link itself, the square footage of that, from what I recall, that was probably much as, much as was maybe have been envisioned, not that far off from what the first original developer would have done. So the mixed use element, and again, enabled us to bring in a high quality tenant. And that's the thing here I want to really keep in mind is that, so with this element here, anyone else, if we said, well, this should be office, well, the reality is, no one, it probably would be nothing, because an office probably wouldn't, you know, we couldn't be that, you know, wouldn't be that attractive for our potential unit. And so here, what this design is truly, is truly trying to activate this whole, you know, town, town green area. The three thousand additional office, that was, you know, we understood the concern, try and get more office, right? That was the right spot to put it, on the corner, highly visible, where people see it, that's where the office wants to be. So our whole job as developers are to have successful projects that are successful, not only for us, but also for the city. And by having this, this building here, you know, I, I think, you know, Kelly and I would, you know, maybe have to go back and say, you know, but I hear you about your, the commercial residential. I mean, I think we could do something, you know, maybe, just maybe a little green, you know, like thinking here is that, hey, maybe we say, look, we won't go ahead and finish those as residential for up to, you know, I don't know, six months, a year or something, giving commercial for shock, you know? So therefore, you know, hopefully it will lease up, you know, just, but let's try and show you truthfully, you know, we're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to fool anyone here, but we're really, we understand that you want this to be, you know, what, you know, a commercial use. We agree that's what we hoped it to be, but we're just being, you know, conservative.
How, how is it you're so sure that they, on the town green though, that office wouldn't work there? I understand that it may not be the most desirable within that block, but from a standpoint, if you look at it and you say, well, yeah, somebody residential would want to live there, but yet an office wouldn't want to work there.
Well, see, here, here's the thing, one, the only, remember, all it is is experience, right?
Right, and I don't have the experience you have, and I understand.
But, but I'll give, let me give you one of the things. This is not class A office space, this is not still in concrete, this is wood, right? And we can get away with that on here on the street right here because that is high demand, you've got, you know, people looking at it going across. But this here, it just, it's, it's, you know, literally is what we would consider to be like be commercial. I mean, this is, this is the old Woody Wachup style, and it's, and what we're trying, this add-on here is really for quality architecture. I mean, this makes this whole building, it gives you relief, and it's just like how this adding that office just gave us a better looking building. So sometimes you do these things because of design. And literally, you know, like I was in New York just this last week, and I'm driving, you know, you're walking down the streets and everyone's walking and they're looking, what are the beautiful buildings? And, you know, sometimes you, you do things, you know, you try to make it economic and feasible, because we're not in the business of charity, but you want to do things that gives the building, you know, a unique status. And the hanger, in all sincerity, is such a good looking building, but it does block that one, our wing, and, no punning within that, and it's a, and that is what we know from our experience, people would be willing to live there, but the likelihood, I mean, like Lori knows, we still have vacancy, we're not the owner of our building anymore, Slayer one one six, there's still vacancy on one twenty-fourth. And so you have to be, it takes a lot of work, it's not easy to get office and retail. And so, you know, we can do something to get, you say, hey, we'll, we'll take our best efforts on sixty eighth to do it, to make it happen.
How much does that cost to do a transition? So let's say if you put residential in the first, how much does it cost to take that out and switch it to a commercial use?
Oh, it's probably, probably on the order of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Not, not huge.
Yeah.
But that's the reason we look at it on a per square foot basis, you know, twenty, twenty-five dollars a square foot.
Councilman Zuzinski.
So to clarify, just one of my comments from before is, for the resid, or the residential idea for the town green facing live works, I don't like the idea at all of residential at the street level or at the level of grade, but I don't have any problem with units being above that. I just really wouldn't, I wouldn't want to sit there on the edge of town green and look over in somebody's living room, I just, I just wouldn't.
And I think just from a design standpoint, you know, there's garages on that level from the, from the rear, and then there's, you know, like an extra den room down there, probably like a guest bedroom, as far as all the living starts on the second floor.
Yeah, more often to be home office.
Yeah, home office, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not there. But also, can you talk a little bit about parking? So it was when we had the commercial building, that there was technically going to be enough parking, but it clearly wasn't going to be enough parking for the fitness building. So you're adding more people, you do, you do have some more spaces, but are we, do we really have enough parking in here? And maybe we just need to be shown that separately so we could study it, but I'm, I'm a bit worried on the parking.
Do you want me to add?
Sure, sure. Bring the expert in.
Do you want to go to the slide?
Take a mic.
Do you want to hear that?
Come on, sit down here. Bring the expert in.
Do you want your, your slide?
Yeah, do you want to go to that slide?
This one? It's kind of hard to read, it's the only thing, but-
Oh, okay. Actually, you guys have a copy of this last page if you're handing out something. So we have looked at, so we did a comprehensive population study with the original development agreement, and we've subsequently updated that for the current plan. And way we look at the parking demand is we look at it from a shared perspective. So we have a, a common parking field that's being shared among the retail, office, residential, and the restaurant. And so we look at that from a demand perspective. Each one of those uses has a different curve. They don't tend to peak at the same time, so we're able to balance that demand. So we've looked at it from a demand perspective and, it's kind of hard to see here.
I thought it was just the trifogals, there was a problem.
There we go, we'll zoom in, there we go.
Oh.
Yeah, so you can see, although we've got, the demand has gone down in the current proposal, the spaces have gone up and the demand has gone down. And again, that's because the fitness center is probably, probably one of the most intense parking uses that's out there. And when that overlaps with the residential demand, you know, at that peak evening time, we just get this kind of overlapping use. So by, by removing that fitness, it just really drops that peak demand down. So we have looked at it and based on those demands, we feel like it's, it's an adequate supply. We've got more numbers we can, we can share that are not in this packet, but we've got all sorts of detailed calculations that the city has seen previously.
Okay, yeah, it, it just, there were enough, the demand was okay in the last proposal and then all of a sudden it wasn't, so I just, I want to make sure that we're, we're being honest.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's, it's pretty crowded out there these days and we aren't seeing, there's no restaurant, the town green's not open, there's no building there.
And so was your base then, the fitness center? Is that how you, your base of your analysis was the fitness center, which I think every building you probably wasn't going to happen? I, I'm just curious, if that's a base, then that, isn't that a pretty high capacity base that you get to work from on?
I'm not sure when you say the base, and that was what we compared it to.
Well, if you assume, let's just say for sake of argument, fitness center needed five hundred spaces, and yet a number of other retail uses might have been two hundred and fifty spaces, and then so all of a sudden, if you're using five hundred as your capacity base number, it seems like it would be a lot easier to, to cut from that because it's such an extraordinarily high parking requirement.
Yeah, so we, let me tell you what we did and I'll, and if that does answer your question. So we look at parking demand at, you know, for zero, and we, we basically layer on every use that's proposed. Each of those uses has a different demand, each one has a different demand curve over the course of a day. All of that is layered on top of each other. And what's showing up here then, for the shared peak parking demand, is that maximum demand when you consider all of those uses layered on, okay? So you can see, before we were having a peak demand later in the day, primarily because of that fitness use. And when that was peaking, and what we saw was an overlap then between when the fitnesses peaking and when the residential uses are then coming back at the end of the day. When we take that fitness use out, you really take away that peak evening activity and you're back more to just the residential and the office, sorry, residential and the restaurant. The office uses have gone down and it's been replaced by kind of the, the peak of the, peak of the restaurant.
So on here, you're, you know, you're, you're listing all of the new uses from your development, but under the parking that you're assuming, you're assuming Kenmore Camera's parking, you're assuming all of the on-street parking, what about town green parking, what about Diva parking? How does all that play in? Is there enough for all of that, and Kenmore Camera parking and USPS parking? You know, I understand that, that all these spaces, if, if, if they're all yours, you have enough parking, but there are other people using that part, using that parking, is there enough when you include the post office, Kenmore Camera, and people using the town green and Diva?
Yeah, we did, the Kenmore Camera demand is factored in, I need to double, I need to, and, and post offices in there as well. I need to double check on what we had done in there for Villatri, and I, I probably can't answer that definitively right now.
Well, I don't think there was ever a parking requirement that we provided parking for those, it was just there was shared parking available in our project.
Right, right, but, but you're assuming all of the street parking also, and-
Well, we looked at it both ways, so even without those, we still meet the demand. So we've looked, that's why we provided it, with those stalls and without.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Sperry, did you have something? I know you've been waiting here.
I had a parking question.
Yeah.
So in theory, this makes total sense, different uses peak at different times. Do you actually have examples where it works in real life?
I do, the, the curves, the demand curves that I'm talking about are based on actual data. So in terms of it working in real life, what we assume in our analysis is based on published data for those uses.
Are there some examples like around locally one could drive to and say, I kind of see it in, in three dimensions?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think.
You can look at our, our-
Yeah, I was going to say, their, their building-
One in Bothell?
Bothell.
Our, our office in Kirkland?
Yeah.
All the buildings we've built, I mean, that have mixed use, all, all take advantage of the shared parking.
Yeah, we do a lot of studies and a lot of developments that are mixed use pretty much, and they all have a shared parking field. Given how expensive parking is to build it, to over, overbuild it is just adding pavement and unnecessary space for people, and so really that shared approach is what everybody is really doing.
I have a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith.
Can you tell us, with this proposal, I don't know at what, how, at what stage or how much you've worked with the city or Brian's department with figuring out what meets current code and zoning requirements versus what is just an ideal plan that you would like to build? Have you gone through the, everything with them or anything with them as far as trying to understand what deviates from current code?
You want to process?
Relative to parking and relative to everything else in the proposal, just to understand, one of the things I would like to know is, is I'd like to see a comparison to know what the deviations are.
So I'll take a stab at that. Our thought process was to provide this to you, show you what, you know, Main Street's plan is or high level priority or project is, and then we'll go back to the drawing board and go through the regular permit review process where we can identify all the code deviations that they're asking for. And then, of course, we'd have public benefits, just trade-offs that we would have to provide as such, and we haven't got into those discussions. This is really just early on, just to get your guys' feedback and input on what they're working on before they get totally into the design of it. But I do have an answer to your earlier question about the percentages required of the DC zone. The design standards require eighty percent of the on-street level to be non-residential.
Okay.
All right, so there's really no action that's required for this side, I just want to get our questions in, our comments.
I do have a request, because I know it came up by two of the council members here, and that was, can we get, and I didn't see it in here, can we get an at-grade southern elevation profile of the building on sixty eighth so we could see what it'd be like from the town green perspective? Thanks.
Councilmember Curtis?
Just another comment, I, my wife and I are getting to an age where we do a little more travel, and we've done some of those Viking Riverboat Cruisers, and some of the older European towns, they do mix the living and the work and the town green, and they do a really great job. People live and they work there, and so I don't have any problem, people being in little townhouses in that space between our building and this building.
Yeah, I see they have added benefit, extra eyes, extra security.
Because, let me just add one point. So here's, you know, Stacy, like to your concern, right? And this is the only reason why, is that we would possibly, let's say we said, okay, if you want those, flip to the, our current site plan with the townhomes. So if we, right there, go ahead, keep it there, perfect. So, okay, let me borrow your-
I got this, I'm fine.
What we could do, I was talking to John here, he gave the idea, that's why, our good architect here, we could say, well, instead of having these part of the townhomes, we could convert them to flats instead, and have that same type of, you know, design element there where, you know, first go is try to make it, you know, office, if there's no office there, then they convert to residential flats. And so there's, that's kind of that nimbleness we were talking about. So, you know, we can go either way, you know, depend upon the guidance, and that's what alternate is, is guidance. But why I bring that up is that it's really up to, you know, what you want, and that's why, you know, having a really good working relationship is so important, and that's why I appreciate all your comments tonight, because it does lead to better design. My hunch is townhomes with their own home office may be more, you know, it's a, it's a neat mix, you know, to have that. But that's really, you know, one of, you just let, you know, Brian and Rob know what's your preferences and we'll design to it. So we can work with that. So that's why we're here, not to listen, so if you-
So then theoretically, you cause office space, it may have to go residential, but it goes, go back to office.
You got it.
And the demand increases.
Right. So you just let us know which way you'd rather have us go?
It seems like you could also do something with the, the frontage design of like setting it back a little bit and putting a screen or something green, so it isn't necessarily people sitting there watching their TV.
Yeah, but that's-
Well, offices, we want that then, so-
Right.
See, that's, that's the thing.
That would be if you were in townhomes.
Right. So if townhomes, you know, like I said, I still think the townhomes naturally be more office, but if you, but if you're saying really focus more on office, you know, we could just have the townhomes be above it and go with, you know, two or three flats on the, you know, on that ground level, so, and see which way.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you, well, I, well, look, I think that would be a good idea, just what you just said. And the reason why is you, you really do have some visibility at least on the corner, so everybody, you know, there's all going to be this great synergy between the restaurant and the town green and the hanger building, and that's very natural, look, is that corner where those two little squares are there. And so I think we really are going to have that synergy, and, and what we've been told, you know, in terms of walkability, sort of that sense of discovery, and you've already got the, your retail on the corner, so really, you know, if you've got something interesting that people can see, and you've got something interesting on the corner, it, it seems natural that you would probably get some, some interest in it. So I would, I think that that would really be more the intention, kind of our public vision, is giving, you know, having the potential to have that whole connection.
Isn't the entrance to the retail down on that lower level too, when you have to walk by? Anybody going to the retail would have to walk right by there, so it's kind of a possibility in that as well.
Right, except for I think most of the retailers will be parking on sixty eighth, you know, or, but you're, you're right, Stacy, though, that is, that's, that is the opportunity, that's, you know, what you're coming to, Lori, so, that's, we can move and revise, you know, but that, that's why tonight's so important, so we can hear what- so we can hear what's kind of the more driving forces. So, you know, that gives us an opportunity to add, you know, a few more, you know, about probably fifteen hundreds, you know, two thousand more square feet of that commercial residential. So...
So have you gleaned enough then from Mark's comments and questions tonight?
Yep, we have.
By the way, I didn't ever say it, but I like the restaurant and the office. I think, I think that's really, I think that's...
Good, good.
City manager.
So I, I just want to make sure, somebody just made the point that that corner retail, the entrance would not be on 68th. It would be down around the corner.
I think it would be in on the walkway, behind the...
It'd be here.
Yeah. Behind Philly.
You'd have some big windows and visibility elements.
Yes. Yeah, you'd have some windows and such there, but the entrance, I just wanted to be, make sure you're clear that you know that.
Are there stairs from 68th down to there?
Or a sloped walkway.
A walkway.
Sloped walkway.
Yeah, it's more like a, a ramp.
Yeah.
Okay. So where do we go from here? Do we want Main Street to make some tweaks and come back to us, or based on the feedback you're giving them?
I would like to, I would like to know more on the, the deviations from what were in the executed purchase and sale agreement and then also with our code. Because there were requirements on both things that, that we had, and I would like to just know where we deviate from them. I, I do, I, I'm still concerned that it's overly weighted residential. So that's just something that I need to process through a little more. And I think once we get that information, it would be helpful to know. But, but, you know, that, that's a great point about the retail on the south, the, the access, because that kind of plays into also why I believe that office wouldn't be that negative on that side of that too, because that's the one retail spot in that whole place, and yet its, its, its access is at the back door of the pavilion.
I, I guess, I like both designs. I like to see the one on 68th tweaked a little bit. I like to see more, more emphasis on the retail. I understand that you've got to do what the market's going to do, but, you know, I know it was a long time coming down in Juanita, and I don't know that I want to sit and see it empty until that happens. But I like, I like the idea of more retail on the ground floor and certainly on the townhomes there on the walkway behind the town green and the hangar. A true live work, you know, I think has some advantages. So, I mean, I could see some tweaks on this.
I, I just want to also say, I appreciate all of you coming out here and, and having your team here to be able to answer things if, as appropriate and stuff, so I, I really appreciate that.
Brian, you have something?
So what I'm hearing is if we get to that level of detail, what we will need from Main Street is a, a complete application in the form of a site plan so we could actually sit down with our review team and go through all the design standards and code deviations.
Look at the mayor's face.
No, I'm just, no, 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 no. That, that has nothing to do with anything. Has to do with what I'm facing tomorrow.
And I'm also hearing that you may be open to their idea for the, for the area fronting 68th where they would first try to lease it as commercial for the first X amount of months, and if they weren't successful, then allowing them to fall back to residential. Or am I hearing that you're open to that, or is...
Can I, I, I'm going to comment, because I know I told you about this before. So I, and, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, because I, I understand you need to do what you need to do that makes the most profit. But I know that it would be very easy to, you know, to just consider it an expense of carrying the, an empty storefront for, you know, six months and then fill it with residential. So it's, it's one of those things that I think as a council, I think we need to, I, I like that, and I think it's a great, you know, gesture to offer it, but I think we need to assume, are we happy if it's all residential? Because that very likely would be what it would be a year from, you know, the issuance of the final occupancy permit.
Yeah, so, Brent, I understand your cynicism there, but I think you have to look at our buildings. And I think actors speak louder than words. Go look at six of us, you know, and you'll see that conversion that's happening. And I just think, the only, the only thing is, is that I, you just don't want vacancy. And I just, you know, I can't emphasize that enough. There's nothing worse than walking about vacant spaces than also you have lack of confidence in the market. And so what we're saying is trying to meet you where, I understand you say, hey, look, this is what we want, get it there. But I'm also saying to you, you know, eight months, nine months thereafter, if it's not leased, it's fair to have it filled up. But my, my, my hunch, my hunch is, is we'll get leased, I mean, but, but it has to get built first. Because this is not, these are like, you know, we're talking about assurance agents upon.
Right.
These are people, there is no such thing as a pre-sell, you know, for that. They see that and they go, God, maybe this is a good idea. You know, it has to be, it has to be one of those things that just happens, spontaneous. I wish it was otherwise, but that's, we're talking about, you know, small business America, you know, and they all of a sudden, they start thinking, oh, this is actually pretty good, I'd love to be part of this. But there's, it's impossible, we can't do a demand study on that.
I understand, I do, I, I respect that a lot. Thank you. Glad you...
Councilmember Curtis?
See, personally, I would rather have it full than empty. And based on your history, I think you, it will turn over, and even if it takes two years to get commercial, I don't want empty space. I would rather have people living in there and over time make the transition. So I, I think if it has value as commercial, it will eventually develop into commercial.
I do have one other question. You did part one and part two, and was that just to distinguish them, or are you not like, is that not necessarily order of phasing or anything? Okay.
Can you talk timeline? Let's say you did get approval from the city for this, how quickly? Could you be able to build all this?
Well, on the, on the restaurant office, you know, we, we'd start on that tomorrow if we could. So, you know, particularly with those two uses like we've been talking about, you have to show that something's actually going on, generally speaking, before you can get someone to commit. We saw that with our most recent project that's under construction today in, in Bothell. We, we had no commitments until we actually had the concrete structure in place, and then it was like the floodgates opened. And all of a sudden, people were calling, you know, weekly if not daily, wondering, you know, wanting to talk about those spaces, and they all leased up. So we feel strongly that we'd like to get going on those two, you know, immediately. And on the, the part one or part two, the other building, you know, we'd, we'd start as soon as we have permits. So that probably means 2018.
Spring 2018.
Spring 2018. But on, on the restaurant, we'd start anytime.
Brian?
So for the permits, it's a good transition. There's a possibility that we could have three things that we're looking at. One is an amendment to the site plan, and one is, another is an amendment to the development agreement, and the third may be an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement. And so the purchase and sale agreement has a, currently has a end date time on it that we need to get amended before that time lapses, which is the end of October. And so keep in mind, you know, the development agreement amendment is going to take a couple of public hearings. It definitely come to you many times. And so time-wise, you know, it's similar to what we did to begin with, you know, four to six months.
Councilmember Herbig?
So I'm not hearing anybody having any issues with the restaurant office building. Would there be, would there be any way for us to separate that off and get that off of our plate and get that moving? And then we can, because the issues all seem to be around the, the building on 68th there. Could we kind of separate out the two issues, let them move forward with, with the restaurant office, and then focus on the other building?
They would still have to amend one or two of the agreements because, for example, they can only acquire the restaurant pad if they have a lease because it's not a restaurant. They're proposing to build this building on spec without having acquired a tenant. So there's things like that where they could maybe adjust some of the agreements.
Councilmember Sperry?
So that was exactly what I wanted to ask, because that is, I know that's a significant deviation from the, the DA. So if we, if, let's just say, I'm going to throw something out, say, so say we were able to close on that parcel and you exercised your option and you built it on spec, and then let's say the economy tanked massively, and so the restaurant sits vacant for three years because you can't find a tenant to fill it. Is there anything legally as a city that we can be compelled to allow a different use for that in that scenario, or if that's what it's for, that's what it's for and nothing else?
That would be a reselling development.
Okay.
But we can, we can say via the development agreement or revised purchase and sale agreement, that's got to be a restaurant. We can do that through an agreement as a property owner, not as a regulator.
Okay.
He's trying to scare us.
Got to look at all options.
We could have that with, probably across the street.
Right, right.
You said they're lined up.
You got it?
It shouldn't be a problem.
Are we happy with this now? Still got a couple more things to do.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you, really appreciate you coming.
City manager?
Thank you.
Staff report?
Just really quick, we have a city council meeting in one week from tonight, and then the May 15th city council meeting is canceled because we're going to have the affordable housing forum and panel that night. And I think somebody in this room is going to be on that panel. Arthur's going to be on that panel?
Yeah.
All right. And Arthur Sullivan's going to be moderating, and so that'll start at, I think it'll be seven o'clock, seven o'clock at night.
Thank you.
So no council meeting on May 15th. That's all I have.
All right, so councilmember reports, initiatives, comments. Councilmember Curtis?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Sperry?
Nothing to add at this time.
Councilmember Smith?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Herbig?
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Dusinski?
Me neither.
So, no, I'm going in for surgery tomorrow, so other than that, no, nothing. We are going back into executive session for how long? I'd say ten minutes, this is easy.
Okay.
No, I mean, no, what, what are you thinking?
I was going to say fifteen minutes, standard.
Fifteen, you got it. We're going into executive session for fifteen minutes. We will be out at...
Mayor, will there be action?
Huh?